Just the three of us, four of us, but three people were important, the commissioners. Okay, our first item is a presentation by Reverend Dr. Kevin Jones on workforce development programs.
Thank you, Mayor. Come on, she won't come up. Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. Kevin Jones, Coordinator of Community Initiatives in the Mayor's Office. Want to introduce yourself?
My name is Tomas Evangelista. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner, everyone else. I am the Senior Director of Program and Operations of the Urban League.
So just real quick, I just want to set the table. I coordinate something called the Mayor's Village Initiative, which is an initiative working with African-American males in the north end of our city. We have an employment training arm of this work, which the Urban League is providing leadership for. But I just want to go through a couple of slides. It's not working. Okay, so this, a lot of this work is focused on young men, 25 and younger, living in the historic northwest Coleman Park and Pleasant City communities. The way we decided on where we wanted to focus our work with black males is with the number of homicides and the high-level-one offenses in these communities. So the goal was about five years ago now, how, you know, did we want to start addressing this issue? This is just a map of the neighborhood where you see shootings from 2012 to 2017. Across the city, the one slide to your left is, you know, citywide. As you can see, the majority of these offenses unfortunately happens in these targeted neighborhoods, which I just mentioned, and these are the homicides. For five years, once again, citywide, and in the three target neighborhoods. So the goal of this initiative is to ensure West Palm Beach where all African-American males are safe, empowered, and secure. And these are the five pillar areas that we are looking at: crime prevention intervention, reentry into justice system, employment training, education, and health. So we have 15 objectives and 75 strategies. So I just want to initially, you know, set the context for the plan that we have developed, but now I'm going to turn it over to Tomas with the Urban League, and he's going to speak specifically this morning about the whole employment training piece. Tomas?
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah. Good morning once again. First, I'm going to introduce the team. I'm going to provide some context, and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty. We have two programs. We have a program called the Urban Youth Empowerment Program. We have two people that run this program, a case manager by the name of Richard Haynes, who's sitting in the back, he's wearing a red shirt, and we have a Miles Davis, not the famous musician, but another Miles Davis, who is an actual case manager. The second grant is a Clean Team grant, and that is ran by Mr. Terrence Reed. Both of these programs are overseen by Marie Sanchez, Vice, Senior Vice President of Programs, as well as myself, Senior Director of Programs and Operations. So here's what I would like to convey this morning. I'm going to provide a brief overview. We're going to look at some of the outcomes from the last fiscal year or program year. I'm going to talk about the strengths, as well as where some opportunities lie moving forward, and then I will field any questions, and the team is here who can answer specific questions if you do have any. So let me provide a little context before I get into the actual grants themselves. Our mission statement as an organization is to assist African-Americans and other minorities in the achievement of social and economic equality. Having said that, we are one of 90 affiliates. We're spread across 35 states. We're in 300-plus communities, and we positively impact roughly 2 million people annually. This organization has over 100 rich years of impacting communities and changing lives. So why am I bringing this up? I'm bringing this up because we use a workforce development model that is validated, it's evidence-based, it's studied across our entire movement, but more importantly, it has been recognized by the U.S. Department of Labor. It's not a fly-by-night program that we said, "We have an opportunity, let's create something, and then execute." This occurs all across the entire portfolio of affiliates. So here are the two grants. The City of West Palm Beach, UYEP, the acronym stands for Urban Youth Empowerment Program. This fiscal year, it was increased to $159,000. And then we have the Clean Team, which is valued at $95,000. So let's look at how we did. I don't have a pointer, so I'm going to use this cursor. Last program year, our goal was to enroll 35 African-Americans on the north end. And let me pause for a second. Before we took on this project, before Patrick Franklin, our President-CEO, takes on any project at the Urban League, he asked three questions. He understands the importance of taking on a project. The first question is, is this project relevant? The second question is, can we be prolific? And then the third question becomes, are you going to add value to something other than the Urban League? If we cannot answer those three questions successfully, we don't move forward. So the value, the relevancy, and the pro, and being productive will come into play on the back end of this presentation. 35 individuals we need to enroll, we enrolled 37. Completed training, it's a workforce development training program, and I'll talk about the strengths in a slide, in about three slides. We actually nailed it. Engagement in subsidized work experience, which we'll all talk about a little later, we nailed it. Began gainful employment, we nailed it. Case conferencing, we nailed it. In short, I have this graphic, but I also have handouts you can take. It pretty much shows what we've done deliverable-wise, as well as our accomplishments. And here's a little success story. We have a 20-year-old high school graduate who lives in a violent crime and drug-ridden neighborhood. He was unable to complete college. He returned to West Palm Beach. He actually enrolled in our program. He completed our vocational training, began an internship with the City of West Palm Beach Public Works Department. Upon completion of that internship, he actually accepted a position, and he's now a technician earning $15 an hour. That is an accomplishment. We took one individual who, not necessarily disenfranchised, but didn't necessarily know where his opportunities were, and we showed him. And that's going to come into effect when I talk about the strengths of these programs. The second program, Clean Team, we nailed it. The Clean Team is led by one leader, a supervisor, and five individuals that goes around in the morning hours and cleans up our streets. Now, that doesn't sound significant, but it is, and I'll talk about that when we're talking about the value of these, both of these programs. 28 members completed the training, roughly 354 hours per participant, for a total number of 1,700 hours. 2,450 bags of garbage were collected, and this is not your regular garbage collection route. This is garbage that's flying on the street. If you look at the number of gallons, we're over 100,000 gallons of trash. So what does this do? It adds to the beautification of the large amount of money on streetscaping and landscaping that the city pours into our city. We have another success story, but due to the limitation of time, I do have handouts, and I will give them to you so you can actually review them. Here's where I really want to spend some time, the program's strengths. So I started off by saying Patrick asked three questions. Are we relevant? Do we add value? And are we productive, prolific? Well, every participant that comes through here, six things happen. They gain a set of soft skills, soft skills that has not been taught in school, or, let me rephrase that, has not been received in school because they were disinterested. We give them an option for a high school diploma or GED attainment. We provide training, and all of a sudden, they have a sense of purpose. But more importantly, they become marketable. You couple all of this with a case management aspect, someone that's rooting in your corner by Miles and Mr. Richard, all of a sudden, you're turning an opportunity around for somebody who, for lack of a better word, was disenfranchised or disinterested. And what do you get? You get an employment opportunity. But here's where we're adding value, and this is what's more important to Patrick, because Patrick realizes, Patrick again being our President-CEO, he realizes that we have to be something greater than the benefit to us. So how does it affect the city employer-wise? The average cost to hire an employee in a professional capacity is roughly $4,000. For a service industry, it's roughly $1,000. The average time an employer spends on non, income-producing activities is roughly at 40%. By bringing this project on, we are now giving employers a human resource arm. We're introducing them to a population that might not necessarily have that opportunity with case management. We're also giving them subsidized labor. What does that do? That adds to their bottom line. And what does that do? That gives them viability, sustainability, with the potential of growth. So now, as we become ambassadors, and as the participants become ambassadors, all of these small businesses that are benefiting are realizing that the city is actually pro-business, pro-small business. And that's where the buy-in comes in. They also get a lot of marketing. When Richard, Terrence, and Miles goes out, it's not an Urban League program. We never say this is an Urban League program. This is a City of West Palm Beach program, and we're proud to do that, because we're ambassadors, and the proof is in the pudding with the participants. Now here's the program's strengths for the city. Patrick wants us to make sure we're adding value and we're relevant. This is the program. This is what I'm responsible for. We get two grants, the workforce development grants, and here's where the magic happens. We stand on four pillars: education, employment, housing, and healthcare. Every single program that comes through our house has to be integrated. So we're hitting four key areas. So let me talk about education. Every participant is given the opportunity of GED, high school diploma, and/or vocational training. We actually sweetened that this time around. Richard had identified non-traditional vocational training programs. What is that? We sent an individual to become certified in tattooing. We also certified an individual in DJ, what is that, Richard?
Music engineer.
There's an actual DJ school in West Palm Beach, started by two Dreyfus students, and we found it. And all of a sudden, we built that interest. So that's the education piece. The employment piece, well, that by design is what the two grants were developed for. Now let me talk about housing. All of our participants become educated with housing. We have housing programs for first-time buyers, as well as foreclosure prevention. One of the participants actually now can afford housing with a full-time job, who has a very brand-new infant in one of our apartments off of Henrietta. We're giving them that opportunity, knowing their background. Why? Because we have to add value to the community that we're in. But more importantly, everything goes back to assist African-Americans in the achievement of social and economic equality. Patrick believes in it, and he charges us every day to make sure we're living up to that statement. But here's the piece that is hidden, healthcare. We have an HIV grant. We have a hepatitis C grant. We require all our participants to get tested. We understand the importance of health, and we couple that with food. We have a food pantry. What we're trying to do is we're trying to eliminate all the barriers. So we're, we're greater than just a workforce development program. It's a holistic approach when we're looking at an individual. So if you take our workforce grants, you couple that with service integration, and how does that add value to the city? We add value to three of the five, what is it, six pillars? Three of the six pillars that the city stands for. The first one is the economy and jobs. We are, we are assisting employers, the small business, with subsidizing labor, acting as their HR arm, their marketing arm, and freeing up their time so they can spend it on income-generating activities. Equity and empowerment. We're giving them the tools and the resources within the community that they may not be aware of, so that they can have more opportunity to advance in life. And lastly, safety. One of our greatest and strongest partners is the West Palm Beach Police Department. And let me talk about them for a second. When we're looking at community engagement, and we come in and we participate with West Palm Beach Police Department, the small businesses realize that police, the police department in the city is not only about public safety, it's also about community involvement. We get our recruitment through multiple activities that the police department has each month, and they, there's multiple officers that go with us, along with our team, to the businesses and says, "We are part of the program. We're part of the city. We want to be heard. We want to be seen. How can we help?" And that is one of our most beautiful partnerships that we can have. So this workforce development, which began as a grant, we started with cooperation with our partners, it ended to coordination, but right now, we're collaborating, and that's where the magic is happening. So where does that leave us? We have opportunities to grow this, and we have opportunities to make some serious impact within the community. Any questions?
One question I have.
Yes, Mayor.
And I've spoken to Dr. Jones. First of all, thank you for the presentation.
Certainly.
Both for this. Is there any way we could replicate the model that we have with the, with the Clean Team to other types of industries? Are you looking at other types of industries, employers, even under the workforce training development? Are we getting buy-in from the private sector for some of these things?
Yes, there's two, two answers to that question. We can replicate it definitely to other industries, and we have been more than just the Clean Team. We've pretty much are in five different industries. We're in healthcare, we're in retail, we are in food and lodging, we are in customer service, and we are in parks and wrecks, or, I don't know, maintenance, if you will. Now, the opportunity lies in that we're currently focusing on the African-American males on the north end of the city. We're excluding an enormous portion of the entire city when it comes to females, when it comes to other individuals other than African-American males. Patrick had a conversation with me two days ago, and he goes, "Tomas, listen, this project is going to wrap up in roughly nine months, eight months." He goes, "What's the plan?" And I says, "Well, the plan is we can grow this, and we can make more positive impact if we looked beyond what we're currently doing."
Okay. President, Madam President.
Thank you, Tomas, for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
As a nonprofit leader myself, I understand how difficult it is to show the impact sometimes of the funding we receive and the programs that we run, and I think you did an excellent job of really relating how the funding is transforming lives, and thank you for sharing those personal stories. I really appreciate that. I'm, you know, I, I'm grateful that the city typically leads the county and the area in jobs and job creation, and I'm especially glad that we're focusing on African-American males, other minorities. I love that you're, you're aware of others that we might not be addressing. So my question relates to our program with NCAT, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, or maybe other staff. I saw Patrick at our first NCAT presentation a few weeks ago. Is the Urban League involved in that job training program as well? I mean...
I am not familiar with the NCAT. Ms. Marie, are you familiar? Can you be a little more specific, so I may be able to address it?
I don't know what it, the...
The acronym?
What it, the acronym is...
National Center for Arts and Technology.
Works and Technology.
Yeah. It, it's a program that the city is looking to bring in. It's based upon a model that we saw in Pittsburgh, and it works with young people, not just African-Americans, but young people, giving them training and et cetera. So we're, rather than trying to go through all the details now, maybe Kevin, you could pull him aside, educate him, and that's a very good point. We should try to bring them into that tent.
Well, I loved what you were saying, Tomas, about a tried-and-true program, and I understand that this group that's coming in also has that experience, but I'd love to be able to leverage some programs we have here.
If I may, Commissioner, Patrick was actually part of the contingency that went to Pittsburgh, and I know he was on the initial board. I don't know if he's still a board member, but, I mean, personally, I, I see it as, as a marriage, where these guys are recruiting young men in, in the neighborhood where potentially this, this facility could be, which I think is a great idea, having a space, having a training center in the neighborhood, because, you know, there's a lot of good programs out here, but they're, you know, far outside of their catchment area. So I believe there is a, you know, a partnership that could take place.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Yes, Commissioners.
First, let me say, bravo for, seems to be a job well done, and that this program is working. You know, I was on the city's Criminal Justice Advisory Committee for probably six or seven years, and I was aware of some of the things that the youth empowerment did. I really wasn't aware of the connection with the Urban League.
Right.
So that's, that's interesting that you mentioned that, that you're kind of behind the scenes and you're pushing, you know, there, it's, it's to the public, it's a West Palm Beach...
Sure.
...project. So, you know, great job for what we're doing right now. You had mentioned that we have two grants. What does the future look like, outlook for funding with those grants? Will those grants be...
Well, historically, the, the grants are renewable. They're for one-year increments, if we're looking at impact. And let me back off for a little bit. This is not the only workforce grant that we operate. We operate roughly four workforce grants. One was actually funded out of England, the Red Nose Grant. We were actually in the school system for truancy, and we nailed it. We nailed it so well that they actually came back and renewed it for a second year. But to answer your question specifically, these are one-year incremental grants. If we would like to have maximum impact, we're looking for two to three years, because that's where the workforce development grant timeframe normally sits at.
Okay.
Another question. One comment I did want to make, and I appreciate your having data, and Reverend Jones and I've had conversations, because as we move forward with the Mayor's Village Initiative and other things, it's going to be so important that we, that we're armed with data, so we could see what kind of success we're making. So please continue. The only thing I would like to add, that we could see if we could track some of these individuals, year two, year three, just to make sure there's a lasting impact on their lives, and maybe incorporate that in some of the information that's reported back to us.
So here's what Patrick charges us with. Because the grants are one-year...
Yeah.
...the funding ends at one year, and because it was renewed the second year, he goes, "Continue to serve," as well as now we're in our third year. We are aggregating that data.
Okay.
But we're also aggregating data for all our workforce development programs, which will add to a compelling narrative of the usefulness, the practicality, as well as the validity of the, the programming.
Great. And then finally, let me, let me offer my assistance. If you are making approaches to members of the private sector, it may help to have the mayor, you know, either attend that meeting or make a phone call. I'm happy to do that. This position has a little bit of influence and power, and I'd like to certainly use that in, in proper ways. So I call it the bully pulpit. So if you need the power of the bully pulpit as you're having some of these meetings or making some of these approaches to the private sector, I'm happy to help.
We, we will definitely take that offer. And to add to that point, we just ended our Red Nose Grant out of England, and what we did is we have 15 private partners for subsidized work experience, and we presented them with a plaque and a letter, and that went so far. We actually have photographs, and I think that bodes very well for our city, the commitment as well as the buy-in for our partnerships. So thank you for that, yes.
Any other question?
You addressed it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, thank you for your presentation. Look forward to hearing more. And if you're looking for more money, these three people are the ones you probably should talk to.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Next item is a presentation by FAU on the Smart Cities Project, and Chris, you're going to direct this discussion. It's very exciting.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners. Chris Ruge, Director of Economic Development for the City of West Palm Beach. So just a little bit of background before we get into it. So this is a project that started last year, and it's basically a project to help us collect more data about how people are using our city. And I'll get a little bit into sort of how we got here in the first place, then I'm going to invite Dr. Halstrom from Florida Atlantic University to come up, tell you what this WPN mobility intelligence project actually is, and what we plan to do with it. And lastly, knowing that we do have a potential foundation funding partner, the Knight Foundation, which has historically been very supportive of the city, they're willing to chip in as well, and then there, there will be an ask about how you all would like us to move forward from this point forward with this, with this overall project. So the origins of this, of this project and program that we're bringing before you today was, the city has been doing, like I said, a lot with the Knight Foundation, and MK, Mary Catherine Morales from FAU, who's in charge of foundations, you know, was very aware about that, and came up and decided to ask, what else can the, can the university and the city be doing together that would benefit South Florida and the state of Florida overall, moving forward? And we came up with a series of ideas that we then wanted to sit down with the mayor about. Now, the idea of partnering with our local universities is not new. This actually, since the Economic Council took a series of opinion leaders to North Carolina and saw what they were doing up in the Research Triangle, it really brought home the importance of needing to take our, our, take our local universities and really do as much partnerships with them as, as we can, because they're untapped resources of creativity, innovation, and just local knowledge that can benefit the city greatly. So when the, when we sat down with then-Mayor Moye about this idea, we decided, well, rather than just sitting here and trying to develop an idea in a vacuum, let's go ahead and have an ideation event, which is a fancy brainstorming initiative, that we sat down with a team from FAU and with all of the city's staff, and spent about a day going through challenges, ideas, projects, anything under the sun that this city was working on, that we could then benefit from the university doing more of a deeper, a deeper study into. And out of that ideation came a series of themes, and those, those themes were mobility, economic development, and geographic inclusion. And when we sat back down with the mayor, we came up with this idea of mobility sensing in our downtown, and, and how people move around our cities, and how we can then affect human behavior as a result. So that was, that's, that was the idea that, that came out of it. And then we, we sat down with the Knight Foundation and said, "Does this idea have merit?" And Lily Weinberg from the Knight Foundation felt comfortable saying, "Yes, it does, and we think that the Knight Foundation could very much be a funding partner for a project like this, understanding that the city is supportive and is also going to contribute to the project as well." So we, what, what came out of it was this idea of, of covering the city with sensors and, and having really high-level expertise... So what came out of it was this idea of covering the city with sensors and having really high-level expertise, PhD student, and a team of engineers from Florida Atlantic University that would partner with the city and commit to a three-year project that we could then really understand how people are using their city. So without getting too much more into the weeds, because really Dr. Halstrom knows all the technical movements of how this project is going to work, I'll let him describe exactly what this program means.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor James, Commissioners, thanks very much. Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to address this group this morning. I also very much appreciate the time that you've all taken over the last several weeks to spend time talking with us, offering feedback about this project, and really helping us, I think, to improve the presentation today. So thanks very much. The project that we've spoken about individually and the project that we'll summarize today is a technology development program. And so this is a smart city technology development initiative. But it's a technology development initiative that is very much human-centered. It's a technology development initiative that's focused on putting residents and business owners at the center of the technology plan. So we're going to be talking about a mobility sensing and mobility analytics program, a tool to help understand how do people move from point A to point B within the city of West Palm Beach? And as they move from point A to point B, where do they tend to spend most of their time? Where are the dwell patterns? What pathways do they prefer? Now, when we talk about mobility, we take a very broad view of mobility. We're not interested only in vehicle traffic. We're interested in vehicle traffic. We're interested in foot traffic. We're interested in bicycle traffic. If you wake up one morning and you have 100 scooters laying around West Palm Beach, we'd be interested in where those scooters are moving. So this is mobility very broadly defined. In the end, the takeaway is that this is going to be a tool that the city will be able to use to understand not only how people move from point A to point B, but to be able to forecast where residents and where visitors might like to visit within the city, to be able to forecast specific business demand, to forecast business opportunity, and also to understand the impact of city initiatives that are focused on mobility. And so that's what we'll talk about today. Now, how are we going to do this? If we look at smartphone ownership in the United States, the numbers are staggering. They're quite a bit higher than I imagine they were. Turns out that nationwide, about 80% of the population owns a network-connected smartphone. I suspect that those numbers are even higher in the city of West Palm Beach. I'm speculating. I don't know that for sure, but it's, I think, a reasonable guess. What I do know is that for those of us who own smartphones or who wear Apple Watches or Fitbits or have other types of wireless personal devices, we tend to carry those on our person. We tend to carry those in our pocket. We tend to carry those in our bags or we carry those in the glove box of our car. Now, it turns out that if you carry a smartphone or you wear an Apple Watch or you wear one of these personal devices, these devices, whether you're using that device or not, is constantly chattering. So there's this kind of silent chatter that your phone is always doing, looking for opportunities to connect to a network. The hallmark of that chatter is a hello beacon. You can think about it just like that. So it's a beacon that says, hello, here is a device that's available that would like to connect to a network. And importantly, within that hello message, there is a unique code, globally unique, assigned by the manufacturer and etched in silicon at the point of production. So this identifier, which has nothing to do with the individual, has only to do with the device, is constantly being broadcast as you walk around with that device. Now, if we listen for those beacon messages and we listen for that code, we can look at measurements of signal strength. So how loud was that hello beacon? I can use that as a mechanism to effectively pinpoint within a radius where that device is transmitting. And because that identifier is globally unique and persistent over time, we can use that as breadcrumbs. So you can imagine all these little breadcrumbs being dropped out along the city as your phone is sending these beacon messages. And then there are tools that we can develop to put those breadcrumbs back together, to assemble individual mobility pathways, and to look at how those mobility pathways change over time as a result of mobility initiatives within the city. The technology deployment plan calls for an array of passive receivers. Importantly, these do not look at network data. They look only at that portion of the message that yields that unique identifier that identifies that device. When these are deployed at scale, by collecting multiple signal measurements and collecting multiple hello messages, these breadcrumbs become higher and higher fidelity. So you're able to track with very high precision how these devices move throughout the city. Now, each of these receiving stations will collect those breadcrumbs. It will tag those breadcrumbs with timestamps, and those will be transmitted up to an application in the cloud, which is just, if you're not familiar with cloud computing, this is just fancy talk for a computer that lives somewhere where you don't care about it. So there's a server process that runs up in the cloud. It collects those breadcrumbs. It assembles them into pathways. And then it leverages the city's existing geo-referenced data sets to enhance that data, to fuse those mobility pathways with information about the geography of the city. Where are the businesses located? Where are mobility improvements being made? Where are new pathways being created? Where is improved canopy being installed? By fusing those mobility pathways with this overall data, this provides a very, very powerful, what we're calling a streetscape analytics tool, that will be exposed through a web front-end that will be available for elected officials, for city managers, for residents, for business owners to make use of that data. It also opens opportunities for the system to offer targeted, highly individualized, hyper-local recommendations to residents and visitors based on where others have participated and dwelled within the city, based on their historical pathways through the city. You can offer recommendations on other places to visit within the city that would provide high value to the resident or to the visitor. Now, to focus on the web front-end, this web front-end, when you think about, okay, so there are going to be sensors, you're going to have things deployed, how does the city use this? So there'll be a web front-end that will be available to the city, and it will provide two fundamental types of visualizations. The images on the left-hand side of this slide are intended to give you a representative view of what those visualizations will look like. The first set of visualizations is focused on the raw mobility data. So you'll have a mechanism to say, I'm interested in mobility patterns between this date and time and this date and time. And you'll effectively see a replay of those breadcrumbs moving about the scene to understand where there was a high volume of traffic. And then you'll have the ability to disaggregate that traffic by mobility type. Show me all of the vehicle traffic. Show me the bicycle traffic. Show me the foot traffic. And you'll be able to see those pathways. The second type of visualization is represented by that middle box. And that middle box is intended to represent the power of this streetscape analytics idea. So one of the things that you can do by taking the GIS layers the city already has and overlaying those mobility patterns on top is you're able to take the same kind of date and time range idea and say, show me the visits to specific businesses during this time window. Or to say, I'm interested in seeing the visits to businesses by type rather than to specific businesses during that timeframe. There are many, many other possibilities depending on how we overlay the city's existing data with that mobility content. One exciting opportunity that we'll explore is to look at tax revenue data, geo-referenced, and to overlay that tax revenue data with mobility patterns to potentially understand the complex relationships between mobility changes invested in by the city, the actual mobility changes that result, and the impact that those changes have on business activity and tax revenue. So that's the idea. The final picture is intended to represent the recommendation system. So once you have citywide data on how people move through the city, the types of businesses that they tend to visit, the types of businesses that individual pathways tend to frequent, that provides a mechanism to offer directed recommendations to individuals using kiosks or potentially via smartphone on other places they may like to visit. So if you're trying to fit that in a mental model, what does that tool look like? To me, it feels like a hyper-local, West Palm Beach-specific version of something like Yelp or TripAdvisor. And indeed, companies like Yelp and TripAdvisor are very likely to be interested in the data being collected through this system, which could potentially create a new revenue stream for the city, something I'll talk about in just a second. This is a technology development initiative. Our team is composed of technology developers. That's what we do. But we're interested in a technology program that generates value for the city, that generates value for the residents, that generates value for the business owners that call West Palm Beach home. So in the end, when we think about what comes out of this, there are three main takeaways that I'd like to leave you with. So the first is that you'll have a powerful visualization tool to understand exactly how mobility works within the city. It's not a guess. It's a picture of what happened. It's a replay of the event. So when the city asks itself, did we see a change in pedestrian behavior as a result of curbless sidewalks? Did we see improved transit when we installed new canopy? This system will provide quantitative answers to those questions, not models, measurements of what actually happened. So that's part one. Part two is this recommendation system. We're very intrigued by this idea of using a mobility system and the city's existing GIS assets to understand how residents, how visitors, how business owners are connected to this place. And when we understand how they're connected to this place, we can leverage that understanding to offer new connections, to create connections that extend not just to residents who are close to the city center, but further and further out. Finally, this is going to be a powerful streetscape analytics tool. So this is a tool that's going to allow you to understand what does pedestrian volume look like. So this is not just numbers. This is what are the types of businesses that pedestrians frequent? When you have an understanding of pedestrian volume, pedestrian patterns, and pedestrian trends, this provides a tool for forecasting business opportunity. You can imagine that a developer or a leasing agent would be very interested in understanding the types of pedestrian flows that move at a particular area. This kind of information is especially important now when the city is advocating reduced vehicle traffic in favor of pedestrian and bicycle traffic. This tool will help to fill this new need. One thing that I failed to mention, and I'm going to back up for just a second, is that in this slide, I've showed a picture of District 3. The intent is for this system to be installed in every district, but we have to start somewhere. The plan is to start with District 3, and that's motivated primarily by the volume of heterogeneous mobility traffic in District 3. But again, the intent is to leverage what we learn in District 3. It will almost certainly need tweaks, and then to extend that to the other districts. So with that, Chris, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
So now, since you've seen the outline of the budget, or I'm sorry, of the project, the ask is essentially this. This project would be a three-year commitment, starting this fall, anticipating that we would kick this off August 15, 2019, because that coincides with the academic year at Florida Atlantic University and identifying, I believe, a PhD student. And the commitment would be, the overall project budget is $200,000 a year for three years. So it's a total of $600,000. And the Knight Foundation, as I mentioned before, has indicated that they are a potential funding partner for this project and has indicated that they could fund up to 50% of the cost of the project, which would mean the city's commitment would be around $300,000 for three years, so $100,000 a year. That funding availability could be built into the economic development budget, the budget that is part of the mayor's office and one that I oversee, as well as potentially using some of the CRA funding available as well to match and make up that $100,000 per year for the overall project. But what we were, the question is for today, do you like this project? Would you like to see it go forward? And if you are all comfortable with it, then we would bring back a funding resolution of some kind at a future meeting to meet the August 15, 2019 deadline. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions on the details of the project. Thank you very much for your time.
Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. That was very educational and informative, and I wish all of my college classes were that easy to understand. So thank you for bringing it to our level. I want to commend the city and the staff for partnering with our universities here. I know we do a lot with Palm Beach Atlantic, but to partner with FAU, I'm very appreciative of us taking advantage of our education capital here in the city and in our neighborhoods nearby. I appreciate that you mentioned that this could be replicated in other parts of the city. How easily will that be done? And kind of to that same question, is this already being done in other cities? And are we following somewhat of a model already? Or is this truly, we're, you know, leading the path?
So first, let me speak to how difficult would it be to replicate this in other districts? I don't foresee any challenges in taking what we learn in District 3 and extending that to other districts. The technology deployed in District 3 will be identical to the technology deployed in any other district. And I should also point out that there's a hardware component, which is the installation of the actual receivers along the district. And then there's the software component, which is the stuff that lives in the cloud and the analytics in the front-end. None of that would need to be repeated for the other districts. So that represents a one-time investment that benefits all. It's only those additional receiving stations that would need to be installed. So I don't see that as a significant challenge. And I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but I think it's very likely that as we deploy these receiving stations along Clematis, we're going to identify areas where we don't need such high fidelity. And we're likely to move those stations potentially along the pathways out of Clematis and perhaps even in other districts. So I think there's going to be a lot of flexibility to move these stations around. Now, in terms of the novelty of this idea and are we following a blueprint, to some extent, yes, we're following a blueprint. The idea of Bluetooth and Wi-Fi, it's called MAC recording, is a concept that's been around for some time, but it's not been used to study mobility. And it's not been used to take mobility data and to overlay that with GIS content to infer more meaningful streetscape data. So the way that this kind of technology is typically used is very, very similar to the way that the motion loft cameras are being used in West Palm Beach today. So the motion loft camera collects information about how many people are within some field of view, and that's what this Bluetooth and Wi-Fi beaconing technology has been used for previously, is to effectively create bar graphs that say, show me how many people were at this point at this time, rather than using that content to understand the mobility pathways through the city.
Thank you.
One thing I want you to address, I get it, but I think for those who may be viewing, I don't think we can emphasize it enough. Can you give us some assurance that this is not breaching anyone's personal privacy? The data we're collecting is not individual-specific? Can you elaborate on the privacy aspect of this, please?
Mayor James, I very much appreciate the question. This is something personally that I care very deeply about. And if we were in another setting, my friends would hear me go off about this. We care very much about individual privacy. And the information that we're collecting, this so-called MAC address, which is this unique code, is in absolutely no way associated with the individual owner of the device. So there's no way for us to take that MAC code and to reverse that to identify the individual unless we were doing deep, so-called deep packet inspection, looking inside the packets to understand, were they connecting to YouTube? Were they connecting to Amazon, whatever it was? So as an extra safeguard, even though this information cannot be used to identify the individual, as an extra safeguard, we're using something called, it's called a one-way hash function. So you imagine that you give me a numeric code that uniquely identifies your device. I take that numeric code and I translate it in a one-way fashion into another numeric code, which can never be reversed to identify the original number. So that provides an additional layer of protection, not only protecting the individual, but protecting the device. the device of the individual. So if we wanted to, I think, I think an important question to ask is, can this information be used for policing? This is an important question. In using this model, it cannot. So this one-way hash function prevents the use of that data in the database from identifying an individual unless the phone was confiscated. If there was a subpoena both for the database and the phone, that's a different story.
Yeah, Chris?
I do want to add that this actually came up with the Knight Foundation as well, and their concern about making sure that privacy was maintained, and was probably going to be contingent on their funding to make sure that that is in fact in place.
Excellent. I'm very excited about the prospects of this. I mean, in terms of what we can learn, and then how it could influence our strategies as a city, significant potential. Commissioner Robes. Who will be the owner of the intellectual property at the end of the day?
So the owner of the data would be owned by the city. I don't know that we've discussed ownership of the intellectual property. I, so I guess one natural question is, do we foresee licensable intellectual property coming out of this project? I think that the most likely source for protectable IP is not going to come from the hardware, but from the business analytics that stem from the project. I think this is something that we have to discuss seriously. I'll tell you my intuition. My intuition is that we both benefit from the partnership. It would be impossible for the university to develop analytics about West Palm Beach or for West Palm Beach without the participation of West Palm Beach. Likewise, I think it's challenging for West Palm Beach to develop those business analytics without the computing expertise at FAU. So my instinct is that this would be shared intellectual property that would be licensed on behalf of both parties. That's something that we would have to codify as part of the agreement, but that's my instinct.
That's a very good question, and the lawyers will hopefully put something together.
Right. I should also say, I can't make a decision on this, so I'm speaking outside my pay grade.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
The data then would be maintained likely by FAU, I suppose, because it's going to be kept on FAU's computing system?
So I had a chance to talk with Nathan Kerr recently about how this might be done. We are very happy to implement this in such a way that the data is stored so-called
Nathan's RIT guy, right?
Yes, yes. To store it on-prem within the city. I don't think that that's a good model for West Palm Beach today. It might be a model that makes sense two or three years down the road, but probably not today. So during the implementation period, we would likely host all of this data within Amazon. So we would host it outside the university, we'd host it in Amazon with all of the public-facing services provided to West Palm through a public cloud infrastructure, protected, but through public cloud infrastructure. This is a model we've used for other projects, and it works very well when there is an intent to transition the database and software to another party outside of the university.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Your eyes say you do.
Yeah, I'm thinking here. There's a whole bunch of issues that come up. So I guess that this raw data that goes in there will be maintained, you know, there's no timeframe necessarily that it'll be, because you really need to maintain the data in order to see trends over a period of time.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm also just looking at, you know, just being a lawyer and a former law enforcement officer, you know, I know you're, we're going to get requests for this data from defense attorneys, from law enforcement. Would law enforcement have, you know, direct access to this data, or they would?
I would see law enforcement's access to the data as identical to anyone else. This would be a fully open access system. All data collected through the system would be available to every resident, it'd be available to any city official, it would be available to everyone, it'd be entirely public.
So as a follow-up?
Yes.
So if they have that phone from a suspect in, let's say, some sort of a crime that occurs on Clematis Street, you would potentially, law enforcement would potentially be able to track the movements of that person if they know the individual data from that device?
They, there would actually have to be three pieces of information to allow that to happen. There'd have to be the database, they would have to be in possession of the device itself, and they would also have to contain the parameters of the one-way hash function used to protect that MAC address. So it's a three-part key in order to identify an individual.
So you can get data, but you can't necessarily identify without utilizing the subpoena power, then?
That's right. Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to make a comment, that I think that the value of this program is, you mentioned earlier, that it will show us the impact of our mobility plans, and I think we have invested a lot in the mobility plans. And I personally love to see that we're able to provide transparency to our residents on what is the value of all these programs we've been putting in place. So I look forward to that information.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to add too that, you know, it'll also help with future development, I think, of our city, when we start looking at, you know, when people start saying, okay, well, where are the trips coming from? If maybe the trips are, you know, maybe not as high with a vehicle, because that's where most of our data is right now, that we would be able to point to other trends, which would definitely help with encouraging development throughout our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, I think this particular discussion highlights the purpose of the Mayor Commission Workshop, and I apologize to the new commissioners, I didn't kind of go through this earlier. What we like to do here is just have conceptual discussions, and to the extent that we need to take more formal action, then we can move that to a commission agenda. So obviously, there won't be anything happening with this without a more formal resolution. You're certainly free to ask staff, even in the interim, any additional questions you may have, and then we'll have a more full-blown discussion when the formal request comes before us. The other thing, the other advantage of our bi-weekly commission workshops, and I know you were with me on the campaign trail, when there was some criticism of the strong mayor former government because it says that, well, commissioners can never get items on the agenda. I'm sure there was a request that went out to each of you even before this workshop, asking if you had any information or items you wanted to place on the agenda. And that is something that we will continue to do. And so it's kind of a two-step process. If you have a concern, an issue, something you want to discuss conceptually, certainly that the city manager know, we'll get it on the workshop work session agenda. And then we usually, if there is a consensus coming out of that work session, then it can move to the broader commission agenda. But I, that has worked out well in my eight years as a commissioner, in terms of being able to highlight issues of concern, getting them before this body, we discuss it, hash it out, and if there's consensus to take more formal action, it can then move to a more, to a commission agenda. So that's kind of the purpose here, is we have, you know, intellectual conceptual discussions, and this is a prime example. We discuss concept, and now before it moves to actual funding decisions, it will have to come back before us, okay? Any other questions on this item? Thank you all very much. I'm excited about it, it's a very good presentation, and look forward to hearing more.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, South Olive Tennis Center, Mr. Rivero. Did I pronounce that right?
You did. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lorenzo Rivero. I am the Special Project Manager for the Engineering Service Department. We are, today I'm going to be presenting to you the South Olive Tennis Center construction project. This project originated from the community input and is part of the Public Works Bond fundings. The project is located on 345 Suma Street West, within the south side of the Olive Park. The existing South Olive Park is on to a large multipurpose field, racquetball courts, tennis center courts. Also, we do have two playgrounds, a wet play area, pavilions, the restaurants, and the storage facilities, and we also have the tennis center and the community center and the gym nation, on the gym nation. The tennis center is a historic two-beach, is a historic, a two-story beach house that was donated and relocated to the site many years ago. It has suffered damage from recent hurricanes as well as structural damages. The existing structure has reached its life and is useless life and is in need of replacement. As you can see on this picture, there's extensive structural damages on the main tennis center building. On the next photo, you can see this center does not meet ADA accessibility, and there's out of compliance. On our next picture is the, our tennis center restaurant and locker room facility. This locker room facility is old and is also no fully ADA compliance. A new restaurant and locker room facility will replace the existing one and will be fully ADA. The construction of the new tennis center, sorry, I went back. During the design process, the city and the consultants, we met in various occasions with the community to determine the scope of work of the new center. The architectural style is a Key West style and is consistent with the historic look of the tennis center. We met five times with a pre-design meeting, with a pre-design consultant, Silver Services 3 Y Lane, which is the lead component of this project. We have four community meetings, and we keep updating SENA, the homeowners association community for that area, in various occasion of the process of the construction of this project. We keep internal communication within the departments of the city to make sure that we are in a path of achieving our main goal, which is the construction of these two facilities. The scope of work of the tennis center is 1,844 square feet. Some of the proposed features for this center will be a great room for meetings, a viewing porch on the rear, and also it's going to have offices and a kitchen. The restroom facility, the locker room and restroom facility will have approximately 1,217 square feet. There are two restaurants that will be able to access to the east, and there is also where the wet play area is located, and there is a lot of children's and families on that area, so we facilitate their commute to those restroom facilities. That will total, 3,061 square feet for both buildings. This building will also be LEED Silver Certified, the first of its kind for the city of West Palm Beach Park and Recreation Department. During construction, we will provide and make sure that we provide temporary restaurant and storage facilities to the tennis center. Tennis programs are active and will be apted during construction, and will be in a strict coordination with the park and the staff on the tennis center to make sure we are less disruptive as possible during construction. As you can see on that picture, we have a construction, pre-construction fence that will be sealed and contain the premises of the construction to be safe to the parks, as well on the west side of the building. You'll see there is this temporary storage facility for the tennis center, and on the east side of the building, you'll have the restroom facility, that will be the temporary restroom facility for the tennis center, and also will serve the rest of the park. With that, the estimated budget for this project will be $1.5 million. The funding source will come from Public Works and federal CDVG funds. So that part of the funding will come from the Housing and Community Development Department in partnership with us. Our schedule is as follows. We will plan to complete the demolition in the summer of 2019. Also, we are trying to begin our project on the summer of 2019 and be, our completion day, completion day will be at the end of 2019. Remember, this is all tentative, pending on approval, permits, and weather and other unforeseen conditions, as we all know that happens. Our next step is to take this project on May 22nd for face of the city for final approval. With that, I am, thank you for your attention, and we are open for questions.
Quick question. I noticed in the public outreach, you listed SENA. Was there any effort to go to any other neighborhoods in the south end that might utilize this facility? Yes?
Yes, Mayor. Wendy, the City Traffic Engineer for City of West Palm Beach, during this process, I was heavily involved. We did walk to west of SENA in the Drea Park neighborhood, and we handed out flyers to all the communities, and we did get a specific meeting, not just for SENA, but a community meeting.
Good, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming out to the community meetings. I attended many of those, and it was good to see the interaction with the residents. And thank you so much to our Housing Department for working with us on this, on the grant I know that you're providing. This is definitely much needed, and the South Olive Park is heavily used, always, it's right by my house, I drive by there all the time, I see tons of families utilizing that. So I'm excited to see this interest in development in that. In that same vein, I know that we have some avid tennis players in the area. I know that we're working, you know, on kids programs in that area, that we have tennis teams that are award-winning, that bring other players to this area, especially now with an upgraded tennis facility. What are the plans in the future? And maybe I want to express to my fellow commissioners, the interest in supporting redoing of the courts and looking at higher-level court material. I don't know if staff wants to respond to any of that.
Well, that was not part of this project, but I will let Leah.
No, I understand that, thank you.
Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. The redo of the tennis courts certainly did not fit into this budget for redoing the old house that needed to be replaced. The desire of the community and the initial plans showed that we have nine hard courts right now at the center. Their desire, the community has expressed, is to convert three of those hard courts to clay and then add three additional clay courts. Of course, that is an expensive venture and something that we can look at in the future of trying to get funded through our Capital Projects Fund, but currently on the table, we don't have that funding for those improvements, but we do have the at least conceptual design.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate you explaining that again, and I know we've talked about that in depth, and just that, you know, we're investing in this tennis center, it obviously much needed, and would be great to have courts that, you know, match the level of excellence that this new tennis center will have.
But understand, everybody needs to understand, with clay courts come additional maintenance. So it's a huge endeavor for the city, it's a great endeavor for the city, but it will incur additional funding that needs for maintenance.
For further discussion?
Definitely. Thank you. And I have a question. Lorenzo, on one of your very first slides, it actually had, keep going back, had a picture of the whole park, an overview.
Just press, press back.
Why not?
Is it froze?
How many city staff members are there taped up?
Too many.
Our point is tricky. Keep going, keep going, keep going. One more, a few more. There we go. Suma Street, right there, and again, Lorenzo, thank you, because this question isn't about the facility itself, but along Suma Street, if we're, you know, looking at this area and we're investing in the facilities here, I think we should also just be aware of other opportunities for safety improvements. But do you see those speed bumps? You can hardly see them because they were colored at some point, and now they are, they're not, and I see a lot of people flying by there, so.
Yeah, I feel I should have stayed up here. So yes, Suma Street is on our overall Bicycle Master Plan, and we are making plans to address some primary throughput in this area, but this is a focal point for us. So we'll be coming back to. So we'll be coming back to the commission with a plan to reimagine what Suma Street could be as it's a grand entrance to the park.
Excellent. Thank you. Very exciting.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you for the presentation. I have had the opportunity to, to do a tour of the facility with one of our former commissioners, and I, I agree that there are definitely some upgrades that need to be made. One of the questions I had was, was with regard to the building itself, the existing building. How old is that building?
It was built in 1923. So the building does meet and requires, we have already talked to the Frederick Midner, the Historic Preservation Board, and she has, sorry, and she has already provided us with the list of items that she would like to preserve and incorporate into the new building, so we do have those already.
That's, that was going to be my follow-up question, is to the historic, any historical significance to this building? It sounds like it was moved from another site to this site?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, at some point, they felt like there was probably some historical significance to this building if they bothered moving it from one site to another, correct?
I'm assuming it is to the Historic Preservation Board, yes. There is a plaque, and there's a few items that, you know, there are there.
It does not have a historical designation, though, even though it was floated down the intercoastal and somehow landed in South Olive Park. But it, the Historic Preservation, our team up in planning said that it doesn't have that designation. But what she has asked us to do is some of the elements, the design elements, to try and bring that into the design of the current building, so that, so that we kind of preserve some of that history behind it.
So, just in follow-up, Mayor.
Sure.
There's really nothing we can actually utilize the building itself for, that it's too far beyond its useful life?
And, and there's the ADA issues with it. I don't know, I mean, to get to the second floor of that building, I'm the only one that probably can get up there. We used to have a tennis pro that was over six feet tall, skinny guy, tall, tall. He would literally crouch down to try and get up to the second story. It, it's, it's really an interesting old building.
Yeah, I've been in it, and it's, it definitely needs.
Did you get to the second floor?
No, I did not. You and I should take a trip there someday, see if we can get up.
The building wouldn't survive.
It's worth just to climb up those stairs, just say, wow, somebody, people actually lived in, in houses that were built like this back in the 20s.
Yeah, it would have been nice if there was something we could do with it, but obviously, if it's in such disrepair, that, that it's not, you know, it doesn't make sense, I guess, to, to do anything with it. I mean, it would be nice to put it off in a corner and make it a little, you know, to hold the tennis trophies and things like that, something, if we could preserve it, but if, if that's something that's not possible.
Yeah, approximately, I'd say about eight years ago, we had a structural engineer take a look at the building to see if we could salvage it, and the cost to bring it to any sort of stable structure for future use was very costly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other follow-up? You know, this discussion highlights, I guess, some of the trade-offs that we as, we as commissioners are confronted with. You'll be hearing more from the city manager about what we're going to do in the next month or so with respect to strategic planning and our approach to it. But, you know, certainly a fine tennis court from the south end, you know, we do hard court, clay, maintenance costs, and if you talk to folks at the north end of the city, you know, they just want street space. I mean, you know, so you have these balancing, competing concerns, commissioners, that, that we have, and there's only a limited amount of resources available. So as we undertake the strategic planning slash budgeting process, these are some of the hard discussions we're going to have in the future. So I'm just preparing you, because it's, it's going to be interesting, and you're going to get emails, phone calls from constituents who are lobbying for their priorities. So stay tuned, stay tuned. Thank you very much for the presentation, and look forward to the state of the city. Oh, yes?
I just have a comment to the comment you just made. To that point, I thought it was really great, I don't know if it was planned or not, but that the Urban League, when they gave their presentation, they actually aligned it with three of our pillars from our strategic plan. And I thought, wouldn't that be nice if each of our presentations did that, or if we had a way to, you know, cross-reference our strategic plan, and when we're making those tough decisions, we, we can really see it.
You're stealing our thunder, because that is going to be part of our, when we present the strategic plan in the whiteboarding sessions, we're going to present you how these objectives fill into the pillars. So that was kind of a preview of what we're doing.
Yeah, very good.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Green, membership on TPA and TDC.
Yes, Mayor. We have two items, and Commissioner Lambert's going to talk about all the other boards and committees, but the two that we need to be specifically worried about at the moment is the TPA and the TDC. And I'll start with the TPA, which is the Transportation Planning Authority. We had Commissioner James, at the time Commissioner James, and Commissioner Ryan on that. Commissioner James is now our mayor, and Commissioner Ryan is no longer on the commission. We had an alternative of commissionerneering. So historically, what we would do is we would take the alternate, make them one of the positions, and then we need to have two other commissioners, one to serve on the committee, and one to be the alternate. And we need you guys to give us direction on that, or you need to make that decisions. So I throw that open.
To those who don't know, that's the former MPO. It is extremely important that we have representation there. We've historically had two commissioners serving in that capacity. The priorities for road projects is discussed, you know, the whole State Road 7 extension issue is part of that debate, and so it is important that we have representation. And I think it's increasing in urgency, because now we have no one after these last elections, so we need to get somebody on there and up to speed sooner than later. I think the next meeting might be in a couple of weeks, next week.
It is.
So, yeah, no, no, this is your baby.
Well, I was just going to comment that I would be in favor of moving commissionerneering to one of the permanent spots, and I would also be interested in serving on the TPA board.
All right, I mean, does anyone else, I mean, I don't know how you're going to do it, and I think in the last go-around, the commissioners kind of expressed preferences. You know, it's really up to you all how you want to choose who the, the new designatees are. So I don't know if anybody else wants to participate on the, on the TPA?
I, I would volunteer for that one if.
I would as well.
Okay, so now you got.
Gotcha. Well, and I, I wasn't sure, because I had asked for all of the committees to be on the agenda, and I was going to talk about that in a little bit, but I know that Jeff, as he mentioned, these two have upcoming meetings. I wasn't sure if, Jeff, did you hear from Commissionerneering? Does he want to serve in that role?
Yes.
He does. And Commissioner Choe?
She did not comment on it with me. I thought she was going to be here today, so I didn't ask her that question. So, you know, maybe what you do is, you know, everybody expressed interest, maybe we bring it as an item, we discuss it on.
You're going to, you're going to discuss it Monday anyway, once you identify the various boards, committees that you want to serve on, you'll come back and, and vote to make that so at your commission meeting on Monday. So you can fill it in tentatively and have a follow-up discussion and vote on Monday, next Monday.
I know in the past, we've circulated like preference lists, and each commissioner filled out.
So that was what I was going to talk about here, is that if every, if each of the commissioners could review this list, and even if there is another name on here, you know, because, for example, if I were to serve on the TPA, then I may relinquish one or two other, the committees that I'm on. So I think that if, so Jeff, I believe in the past, we submitted these to a staff person so that we weren't discussing it ahead of time.
Submit it to me.
Submit it to you.
Yes.
Okay, great. And then we would vote on it on Monday at our commission meeting, is that, or should we come back and discuss it again?
No, you don't have, you can discuss it and vote on Monday, and make it final, yes.
All right. And is there any interest in the TDC?
And the only reason that was listed is kind of a priority, is that they did have a meeting last Thursday, which I did attend. So I don't, so the next one is not until next month, so I don't think there's as much urgency to do that, that can probably be thrown in with, with, with the rest of them.
Okay.
I will point out that the, you know, the TDC is, does funding for all of the, for example, the convention center expansion, so it is very important that we put somebody on that committee.
That'd be interesting.
All right. So you could just include that with the list of ones where they indicate preferences and.
So we'll bring that back Monday night, and, and if you would send me your preferences, we'll have that kind of put together so that you can have a coherent discussion.
Okay, great.
And, and thank you, commissioners, even for those who've expressed preliminary interest. It is very important for the city to be at the table. As one of our former commissioners said in his infamous words, "If you're not at the table, you're on the menu." So we don't, we don't want to be, as a capital city, we don't want to be on the menu. So please, give that your concern. Do you have anything else on that matter?
Not on that matter, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, yes.
I, I just wanted to take this opportunity, we are working on the date for the commission work session on strategic planning, the, the whiteboard. We don't have a final date yet, but I think, I think they polled everyone, and we're trying to pull a date together, so.
And you've discussed the concept of that with each of the individual commissioners?
I have.
All right, good. And hopefully there's.
And, and I will remind you all that, you know, one of the things that we're hoping that you'll bring to this is some ideas, so, so as we have this meeting, you know, bring, bring to us some ideas of what, what you'd like to see us looking at strategically.
What I, what I would suggest, Mr. City Administrators, once we have a date set, maybe you have another sit-down.
I was.
With each of them individually, and, and kind of identify what the, what we're looking to them to bring.
It'd be nice to have it ahead of time so that we can be thinking about it.
Exactly, exactly. And we are planning to have it professionally facilitated.
We are.
Good. Okay. The only thing I have under Mayor's Matters, and I want commissioners, I want you all to think, as you know, as mayor, I make a number of appointments to various boards and committees. We do have a nominating committee set up for that, which is kind of like a, an ad hoc committee. What I would like for each of you to do, if you're so inclined, is give me maybe three names from each of your districts. I think this will give you an opportunity to have some input on that committee, and I'm, I'm willing to do that. So get those names to Mr. Green, and we will certainly attempt to have a representatives from each district on the nominating committee as well. And again, it's just an effort to have a more collaborative approach to a lot of decisions that are affecting us as an entire city, and to some degree, it may be diluting my authority as a strong mayor, but I don't think so, because I still get to make the final call. But, but I do want you to feel like you've at least had the opportunity to put some members, have representation, if you will, on the nominating committee. And that's all I have. Do any of the other commissioners have any? Yeah, Madam President?
Thank you. And I, I wanted to say thank you for your comments earlier in the meeting about the, the structure of these workshops and the reason why we have them. And I appreciate the opportunity to email our ideas for these meetings, but I was wondering if I could make a few suggestions for future meetings in this other section here.
Sure.
And, and I've talked about it before, but I just wanted to, to share it with our new commissioners as well, is that I would really like us to see, to, to take a solid step towards learning more about and partnering with our public schools, specifically our underachieving or underperforming public schools, and, you know, what way can we effectively partner with them? And so I've suggested in the past that we have a joint session like this with some of our school board members, the superintendent. Another topic, and actually, I just wanted to say.
Before you move off that point, maybe it'd be good for us to understand what we have been doing as a city, so maybe before getting there, we can have a presentation from staff, I don't know if that's under Chris Ruge, and educate us all on what we have been doing, how much money we've been spending, what types of programs, et cetera. And then we could, maybe at that, discuss whatever next steps or further steps.
That'd be wonderful, thank you. And then, I'm sorry he left, but Lorenzo Rivero, I wanted to commend the staff for putting some emphasis on Hispanic outreach to our Hispanic-speaking residents. Lorenzo has been at a lot of neighborhood meetings and helping us to make sure that we communicate, and so I wanted to put that out there as a future discussion item to review our communication strategies with the Hispanic community.
Very good idea.
Thank you. And, and, you know, just really that we're focusing on the public safety, the quality of life, getting their input, and that they feel included in the decision-making process.
And I think it's, things as simple as our website. I mean, do we have a Spanish version of our website? I, I don't think we do. Even collateral materials, the, the outgoing mayor of Tampa, Bob Buckhorn, is a, is a personal friend of mine, and I looked at his business card, on the flip side of the card is his name title all in Spanish. So we might want to look at things like that, but I think it's good to have a broader communication strategy discussion on, on our outreach, and, you know, we do have a burgeoning Haitian community, so maybe we need to do something with Creole, et cetera. So I think it's worth a discussion.
Thank you, and I appreciate, Jeff has mentioned to me us hiring and putting an emphasis, emphasis on hiring our 822.
Yes.
Employees to be able to answer the phone, speak in Spanish, translate, and relate, so thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Anything else, commissioners?
I have nothing.
Anything? Okay, well, thank you all, and thank you all for attending, and enjoy your week. We'll see you Thursday at a general review.